Going to open this work session, please rise for the pledge. Cecily, roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Richards. Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Thorsten.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
President Protem Mahler.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Present. Let the record show we have seven present and zero absent. Moving on to the next item, we have a city council work session, Parks Master Plan. Who would like to open us up?
Okay, thank you. Now we've got feedback, but we will be getting new microphones soon, so we're excited about that. So Cameron McCarthy Landscape Architecture and Planning has been working on this plan for us for about a year now? Not quite that long, almost? Okay, about nine months. And they are going to be kind of going over their draft. There's still some areas that we kind of want to discuss tonight, but they're going to be talking about the progress that they've made so far. And they have already done a lot of community engagement and other pieces, so. All right, how about that? You all hear me that way? Okay, let's do that. It's a little better. So they're going to be working through the presentation and there will be a time for discussion and for us to talk about some of the priorities that I know that this council has as well. And then they'll be coming back at a later date to then, all right, we'll just stay right here, to have the final plan approved by council. So this is really a work session. They've put a lot of work into it. This is a grant-funded Parks Strategic Parks System Master Plan, excuse me. And so there's, this is to really be a piece that we want to look at for when we move forward with another strategic plan for the entire city, but this really covers our parks piece. So I'm going to turn it over to them and they're going to give our presentation and then, like I mentioned, there's times for discussion and so forth there as well.
Thanks for the intro, Kelsey, and thanks for having us today. My name's Elizabeth Oville. I'm a landscape architect at Cameron McCarthy. I'm joined by Colin MacArthur today. Do you want to say a few words?
Oh. Oh, sure. Yeah, I think, thanks Liz. I'll provide a little more background on on who we are and the purpose of tonight's meeting. Kelsey mentioned we're with Cameron McCarthy Landscape Architecture and Planning. Our headquarters are in Eugene. Liz is in our Portland office and we have a Bend office as well. We've been practicing planning and landscape architecture out of Eugene for 70 years and parks and recreation, schools, campuses are among our core services. So we typically prepare two or three of these plans each year for jurisdictions around the state. Last year, we worked in Sisters, Oregon, White Salmon, Washington, and Harrisburg, Oregon, preparing plans. Plans are planned updates for them. It was White Salmon's first plan and then we updated Harrisburg's and Sisters' plans. This year, we were fortunate to be selected by the city of Sweet Home to update their plan. We're also working in Chelquon, Oregon, and Malala, Oregon. But Sweet Home is ahead. You guys, you guys are in the lead and are on track to be adopted or completed soonest. And we typically like to get in front of council a couple of times for work sessions and then for meetings. This will be our first work session and we'd really like to summarize the community input and involvement process and our draft recommendations. This is the part of the process where the plan starts to come together and we could use input on the projects we have identified and our priorities and any other suggestions you have for the plan. As Kelsey mentioned, we'll be coming back at a later date for adoption with Planning Commission and City Council, but really this is an opportunity to provide input and work with us on the final product. And with that, I'll turn it over to Liz, who will do our presentation.
Thanks, Colin. Let's see. Okay. Is there a way to, I'm just realizing that I don't know if the presentation is fitting to the screen you're seeing? Is there a way to just make it a little smaller? So each slide is fully visible? Oh yeah, nice. Maybe even like window width, is that an option on there? At the very top. Okay, cool. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't catch that before, but there might be important information in the bottom part. So thank you again for having us today. We are going to give an update on the park system plan like we've talked about. See, could you go to the next slide? Okay. So on our agenda today, I want to talk a little bit about the process before getting into like the specific updates. And then we are reserving time at the end for questions, but also discussion as part of the work session. Yeah, next slide, thanks. So park system plans are a critical tool for a variety of reasons, but they do identify current needs in a park system as well as anticipating the future needs that'll happen in the next like 15 to 20 years. By doing analysis and inventory of your current system, you're able to update the vision and then using the plan's recommendations, you'll have a level of detail that'll let you implement the projects and realize the vision over that planning period. Next slide. Okay, so this just describes our timeline and the different stages of the process. So early on, we do an inventory of the conditions of the system. We also look at the demographics of the community and we also do a variety of community outreach methods to speak with residents and understand their feedback. All of that information gets compiled into what we call a needs assessment, which essentially identifies needs of the park system. We use that needs assessment to develop goals and then recommendations for the plan. That's where we're at today, so we have updates, but also draft recommendations to share with you today. We want to talk through those with you and hear your feedback. Kind of what's next is the documentation and adoption part. So that'll come after we revise the work that we've done in terms of like incorporating all of the feedback and then we'll move forward with the adoption process, once we've done all that. Yeah, next slide, thanks. So as we began our assessment of the system and park facilities, we noticed a number of strengths in Sweet Home and those include the variety of improvements that have occurred at Sankey Park as well as downtown improvements such as like painting and landscaping. And then we also noticed an investment in undeveloped parkland, which specifically I'm talking about the Quarry property. So we noticed all of those strengths. Next slide. And then part of that early phase is studying demographics and I want to share just a few key points. I won't get too detailed, but one is that there is a unique age distribution in Sweet Home. About half the population is either 45 or older. So that's a significant number. And then there's also less than 25% are under the age of 18. So that's just a snapshot, but you can picture over the next 20 years how that's going to shift. And then the population's expected to grow also over the next 20 years. Next slide. Yeah, and then my last takeaway that I want to make a note of for demographics is that Sweet Home is diversifying. We saw a number, a significant growth in a few different categories. Individuals that identify as Black, Hispanic, or Latino, or multiracial were among the largest groups to grow within Sweet Home in the last 10 years. So just to recap, demographics are important data for us to consider as we're planning for the next 20 years so that we can understand who's currently living here, but also like what direction the population is going. Next slide. Great, thanks. So part of studying existing conditions includes a formal inventory. We inventory the systems' facilities based on classifications and we use the National Recreation and Park Association standards for that. And let's see, actually, could you go to the next slide? Yeah. And we noticed in Sweet Home's park system that you have a good variety of facility types. So you have a number of neighborhood parks, but you also have a central community park that's highly used as well as some special use facilities and a natural area park. We also organize facilities based on their developed status. So we look at, there's a number of developed facilities in the system, but there's also acreage that has potential to be developed. So we've also documented that in the undeveloped facilities category. Next slide. And our community involvement approach involves several different methods. We use inventory, or I'm sorry, we use interviews with community members as one method. We also do an online survey and attend in-person events that are happening in the community. Let's see. And across those three different methods, we heard reoccurring themes about people's opinions or experiences in the park system, their needs and interests. But we did also learn unique things in each different method. So I think, next slide, please. Thanks. Okay. Great. So one reoccurring theme was the need for parks in the eastern and northern parts of town. We heard that across all the different events and conversations that we had. There is also a priority to develop existing parks. And then in the interviews specifically, we did hear there was a high satisfaction with park maintenance that's currently happening. So that was really positive. Could you go to the next slide? Yes, okay. And the pop-up events, we had a high number of engagement with individuals there. They were really well-attended. Or we were able to cross paths with a lot of people at those events. We did learn more about park amenities that are really important to people. In addition to playgrounds and accessibility that we heard in the interviews, we heard that reiterated here, but we also learned that water recreation and water play are really important to people. It was like by far the most highly important amenity to people at those events. But there was also interest in improved circulation with trails and paths and bike recreation as well as dog parks. And I think I already said, but at that event, people reiterated they really wanted to see parks on the eastern part of town. And then next slide, please. Thanks. Okay. And that dovetails with the online survey where 70% of participants mentioned that they felt the city needed more parks. And then again, we did hear reoccurring themes about what amenities are important to people. And just to reiterate, play, trails, water play, recreation were all top amenities we heard once again. And then one unique aspect of the online survey was that we learned a little bit more about the community's vision or their hopes for the vision of the park system in the next 20 years or so. It's centered around two things, I would say inclusion and accessibility. In their words, it was people are looking for a variety of recreation opportunities that include the needs of everybody and consider everyone's interests. And then there was also the accessibility part. People want to be able to access park facilities and have accessible equipment. So that was a unique aspect to the online survey. And then one last thing about the survey, we asked residents to rank their priority or what they hoped the city would prioritize. They mentioned upgrading existing facilities as slightly more, that received slightly more responses than building new parks, but they were both really important to people. And next slide, please. Okay. So shifting away from public involvement, another aspect of the needs assessment includes level of service. And this is measured in different ways. One way is looking at walkability of parks. So it looks at where parks are located and how they're distributed amongst the system. NRPA again provides some guidance here. They share a half-mile or a quarter-mile service area depending on the park type as what they call walkable service boundary for a park facility. We have mapped those here, but we've also shown more current research shows that a quarter mile is more, a more realistic distance that people are willing to walk. So we've shown those in brighter white circles or radii around the park facilities. So anywhere within those boundaries, someone has walkable access to a park. And then on the flip side of that, anywhere outside of that, obviously you can get to a park, but you need a different mode of transportation. Next slide. Okay, and then there are two other ways or two other metrics for measuring level of service. One looks at a ratio based on residents. Another one we'll look at, and a second is based on park acres. But for residents per park, I guess first of all, NRPA collects data on what level of service park agencies across the country are providing. So we use that when we calculate a ratio for a city like Sweet Home, but we also measure that against what other park agencies of a similar size, what they're providing their residents. So we calculated Sweet Home's ratio of residents per park. And that ratio ideally is on the lower end of the spectrum, meaning you have a lot of parks per resident. And right now, Sweet Home's ratio sits just below the upper quartile or kind of on the higher end of the spectrum. And then we've also done some projections looking into the future and it's probably, it's helpful just to note that over time, level of service starts to decline if there's no new developed park facilities. And then if you go to the next slide, oh yeah, thanks. Sorry, no, you were in the right spot. My bad. Okay, so acres of parkland per 1,000 residents is how we calculate the second ratio. For this ratio, you want a higher ratio. Essentially, you want more park acres per 1,000 residents. Right now, Sweet Home's ratio compared to similar-sized agencies falls below the lower quartile. So Sweet Home has less park acreage than a similar-sized agency. And similarly, this ratio, the service will decline over time if more park acres aren't added to the system. And next slide. So all of those different components that I mentioned, the inventory, the outreach findings, the level of service and community demographics, we use all of that information to provide a needs assessment, which basically identifies key needs for the system as it currently is. And I'll touch on those five. We included five key findings and we are able to summarize them into five points. Facility development and improvement is the first finding and there are a number of things that are high priorities within that, some of which I've mentioned. Level of service and connectivity is the second. Enhancing that is a need for the current system as well as enhancing physical accessibility within parks. Great. And then the last two are expanding funding sources and opportunities as well as creating a welcoming atmosphere. So just including a variety of recreation opportunities for people and addressing underserved residents. Thanks. So our goals really mirror the needs that we found in the assessment. So we've included a goal to develop and improve park facilities. We want to increase the level of service and connectivity. We recommend improving physical accessibility within parks as well as expanding resources for those improvements and maintenance. And then we want to just expand how the park services can provide access and then include residents, particularly residents that may be not included to the fullest degree they could be right now. Excellent. Great. So we've used the needs assessment and the goals that came out of that to inform our draft recommendations and we want to share those with you today. This is a map that shows, it just identifies sites where there are recommendations. I know it's kind of small, but you should have one in front of you too, if you want to look at that. And next slide, please. Thanks. Okay. So I want to go over a couple of things. The vast majority of park sites do have at least one recommendation and most of them have at least one high-level recommendation or high-priority recommendation. The recommendations are broken into phases at each park. Most parks have multiple phases. And then we've assigned to those phases a priority level and that just indicates whether or not we think this is a short-term need or if this is a longer-term project to implement. And I'm going to touch on just the high-level recommendations because I think you have all the content in front of you. And then I will note a couple sites that don't have high-level recommendations though, too. So I'll start with the neighborhood parks. Ashbrook Park has installing a restroom, lighting, and security cameras as a high priority. Clover Memorial Park, we recommend traffic calming and improving visibility as a high priority project. I think you're good. Yeah, okay. And then at Northside Park, we want to, or we recommend installing a river access trail and a viewing or fishing platform and security cameras as a high-level recommendation. And then at Strawberry Park, we recommend starting with improving a parking area and a loop trail and security cameras as the high-level Phase One projects. Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see, at Sankey Park, our recommendation for the first phase is to design and construct the bandstand slash community event center. At Hobart Natural Area, we recommend starting with developing a natural area management plan. The special use park and undeveloped parks, we don't have high-level recommendations for them, but we do see improvements there long-term. Resurfacing the parking area at the boat ramp is one of our recommendations. And then landscape improvements at Walkabout and Halfway Park. And then site furnishings and sidewalk improvements at Halfway Park are included in our recommendations. Nice, okay. And then we do have recommendations for three new parks in the system. The first is a neighborhood park adjacent to City Hall. For that site, our high-level Phase One recommendation is, includes relocating the Dolenburg Cover Bridge from Sankey Park, installing a dog park and then also a pedestrian path to connect to the neighborhood nearby. Our second new park recommendation is a future neighborhood park at the corner of 42nd and Osage Street. We recommend developing about five acres as parkland there. And then our last new park recommendation is a regional park at the former Quarry site. Phase One for that, we recommend installing multi-use paths at that location. And then we do include some trail and land acquisition recommendations. Developing a trail system plan is a high-level recommendation. And then we have two acquisition recommendations. One is developing approximately five to 15 acres as a neighborhood park on the east side of town. And the second is a feasibility study for an outdoor event center. And then we do have some system-wide recommendations. So these are kind of more broader recommendations, they're not for a specific park site. But our first one is developing a wayfinding system plan. This would look at providing comprehensive design for on and off-street signage around town. We do recommend adopting a higher level of service target and installing on-street signage based on that wayfinding plan. And then we recommend adopting or amending the development code to allow for parkland dedication or funding towards parkland development. And, and then our last, this is a medium-level recommendation, but just as parks are developed over time, we recommend providing or installing consistent products, both for cost efficiency, but also consistency visually. And that could look like site furnishings, like trash cans or signage, too. And then I'll circle back to level of service briefly because it's a little more detailed, but I know we mentioned recommending an increase in level of service. We project, or we recommend a level of six acres of parkland per 1,000 residents and that would bring you to the lower quartile and, and essentially increase your current level of service quite a bit. That would look like 41 acres over the next 20 years. And the second part to that recommendation is also increasing the number of parks as well. And so that 41 acres could be divided up between the three to four parks. Okay, I think I'm done talking for the moment. I have that map there, but we can go to the next slide, too. It's, I just want to move on to questions and then also discussion time. Thank you very much.
Michael. When you talk about high level of services and products, are you including picnic tables? Because when I go out to the different parks, I notice a drastic low number of picnic tables for each park, whether it's Ashbrook, whether it's Sankey, for the number of people that those have the ability to draw upon. It kind of limits the number of people can be there and have family events and engagement currently. And so I was wondering where that fits into this.
Yeah, we do kind of generalize things like picnic tables under site furnishings is what we're calling it. We do include that on a number of the parks because that did come up in the inventory as there was limited seating. So other site furnishings might include picnic tables, benches, trash cans. There could be other things too, but those are the key things that we had in mind when we're using that term.
And remind me again, what is the total number of acres that we have currently, including the Quarry River and the Hobart Park in the city? Because we have a population of 10,000 and so it seems like we'd be pretty close.
Let's see, so there are about a little over 86 developed. Let's see. So there are about a little over 86 developed park acres right now. There are several parks aren't included in that because they're undeveloped facilities. But for that category, there's over 233 undeveloped acres, too. So those are both important to consider.
Thank you.
If I can just add, you all haven't included the pieces that we've already been working on improving in Quarry Park. Right? So the camping and those areas are not included in this right now. So once that's finished, to your point, a lot of the acreage would immediately change. We also have started construction as of today on 42nd and Osage. So that will be changing as well. And this is to keep in mind, when we have a Parks System Master Plan, we haven't had one in the past. Well, we have, but we really, really needed to update it, and it hasn't included a lot of our current parks. So this is a really good baseline with the idea that we can always add additional picnic tables into those systems. Some of the things that I would like to see in this plan and other things are things like adult fitness equipment and pickleball equipment and, you know, other things as options that could be here. But right now, it's just a very, very high-level draft.
And so another question. Was access to water and power at each park considered? Because people who have events and local community events, they're going to need these things. Is that available at each of these parks that you've identified so far?
So we did hear community gathering spaces come up and covered spaces. Those could potentially have water and electricity. It is interesting that not many people mentioned that when we spoke with them, though they did. So I don't know if they were assuming that we understood that in the community gathering spaces category that we were asking about. Oftentimes, people will be really specific, so I'm not sure. It might be helpful to look at which parks have current utility services right now, and maybe that is meeting the demand, and that's why we didn't hear about that. Anything you wanted to add?
Expand on that a little broader. Yeah, typically, we would assume that if a park is developed, that it has water and power and that you are at least providing water in the form of a drinking fountain. And then if you have facilities there, such as restrooms, lighting, security, then it has to have power. So all of the undeveloped parks that we've identified, we'd be bringing up to water and power standards. And then if a specific park is programmed for something like a restroom or an amphitheater or a stage or an event space, then yeah, it would, it would need power as well. And we didn't mention, we're in the process of developing cost estimates for all of these projects. And so those cost estimates would include bringing either utilities to the park or bringing utilities to the specific infrastructure in each park.
And just another thing to add is we've noticed as we've made improvements in parks, a great need for, and a great impact by having additional lighting and security cameras, both of which obviously require electricity. And so that's a high priority from the staff perspective is to make sure that we are protecting what we're paying money for. And that's just another reason why we need that power at each of those locations. Anytime we've talked about a gazebo or some kind of structure like that, we're not putting those in without power. That's always been part of the discussion.
City Manager Young, I was curious, because Wiley Creek, that park down there, is not our land necessarily, but I know that we have some discussions regarding that. Would that be calculated into these?
If we end up getting control of that, which, fingers crossed, we're still having discussions for that, that would be included in this, that would add additional acreage. And it also would help mitigate that need for that area, because that's a challenging area for us to even figure out how to have park space right over there. So that would definitely be a boost, and I'm really hoping that that happens. It is in discussion.
Yes. Any questions of council or comments or ideas?
A wild one. Since we have 10,000 people in our city, is there a proportion of dog parks acreage that we should have throughout the city to match that? I know.
I'll give this straight answer. No, there's not a readily available or adopted metric that we know of for dog parks. That said, wherever we work, that's usually one of the first things that, first things that comes up is dog park. And then lately, it's been pickleball. It's been a couple of the most highly demanded facilities. Like, I think we'd recommend at least one for a community of Sweet Home size, but they can range in size from a few acres to 10 or 15 acres. And they can be in multiple locations. So we had looked back to the public input process. And Liz, do you recall how popular Dog Park was in our community input process?
It ranked, it ranked not at the top, that would have, at the, but it wasn't at the very bottom. So there were, I could follow up and send you. It did rank, like, in the top, I want to say five or 10, at one of the events. And I want to say it was one of the in-person events. So there's definitely interest. But I guess to kind of balance that, water recreation, playgrounds, trails, and gathering spaces seemed like, I mean, we just saw those over and over again at the very top. So just something to keep in mind.
I just happen to live on a road where I see a lot of people walking the dogs. And I know people go out, clear out to Sunnyside, and there's a large dog park out there. But if we're talking every quarter of a mile is all the farther people go to their parks, I think they would travel farther to get to a dog park. And I'd love to see that as part of this plan, from one end of our community to the other. Just fit within the space where we have extra space available, because I think that's healthy for the owners of the dogs as the dogs walk the owners. So that would.
Yeah, thank you. And just to shape this discussion, that's exactly the type of feedback we're looking for from council tonight. To put a finer point on level of service, we're recommending about another 40 acres and three to four new parks in the next 20 years. But you have Quarry property, and you have the Osage property, and the future City Hall property, and a large area on the east side that is, needs to be a neighbor park. So you're on your way there. We just need help figuring out exactly what the projects are and whether or not the projects are in the right priority, right prioritization, excuse me. Do they accurately represent the needs of Sweet Home and your community? So yeah, Dog Park may be a mission we need to add.
If I could just add something to that, Councilor Gorley, I think you're completely on the right track there. I received a request to have a dog park at Osage and 42nd Park today. And we have continuously heard about having the dog park right next door at the City Hall Park as well. So I think if we were to just add those two with the idea that later date, I do think we need to look at something at Quarry as well. I think that could really help to mitigate that, because I agree, and I'm a dog lover, and I like being able to take them to dog parks, too. And I think that's a big part of our community. And where we are actually a pet-friendly certified city and one of the few in our area, I think going ahead and celebrating that is important, too.
I was just going to ask City Manager Young, when you have these calls with people, do they know that there is an existing dog park in the city of Sweet Home?
They do. They do. And they love it. And that Dog Park has been extremely popular. I think one of the things that I've seen is we didn't have a Dog Park in the city until fairly recently. And so that wasn't even on everyone's radar. And now that there are Dog Parks available, we see more and more requests for them.
Good. Great. Thank you.
Kelsey, remember when we did the one down on the other side? Do you remember approximately what the cost was for that with the donations? Just give me a rough number. It does not be perfect. Were there some donations for that? Yeah, the Dog Park? It wasn't very much, I don't believe.
It was about 15,000 total.
Yeah.
And that was covered by a donation. And we have received interest in others providing donations to provide additional Dog Parks.
Yeah. And one of them is right here in this building.
Exactly.
It would seem to me like that that would be a process that we could do and make that fairly easily, because the fence is up. But anyway, that's just.
No, it's definitely a low-hanging fruit. It's one of those ones that we can add a Dog Park fairly quickly. What gets harder is the power and water. And if we're going to provide, you know, water dishes for the dogs and things like that. If we're not trying to provide those pieces, we could probably put in another Dog Park in the next few months if we wanted to.
Yeah. And the parks, I mean, the, when Greg puts his people together for the Public Works, they get stuff done, and they did a really good job.
We are extremely fortunate in having a very strong Public Works Department who are capable of doing a lot of these things in-house.
Another thing I noticed during the public comment time, especially at the Harvest Festival, which you guys were there to gather input, was a splash pad idea. Is there a location that has been discussed amongst staff where that would be?
We've discussed two spots so far. One is actually right here, because you could see it from Highway 20. And so that would be a way to potentially get people to stop in town that are just traveling through. And then hopefully, they would then get hungry and go visit somewhere for lunch or something along those lines, too. The other option that we've looked at has been Sankey Park. And both have their advantages very much. And Sankey Park is already sort of our premier park. It's absolutely beautiful. And, but we also have been discussing the merits of expanding facilities to different areas as well.
Thank you. Councilor Gorley, did you have something?
I would highly recommend the splash pad be here, because the parking access, Sankey is already drawing enough, and you already have a parking problem there because of it. It's a lovely place, but I think right here, you're right. It's, people driving by are able to monitor it better. And I think that's actually a great idea. But again, I really, more picnic tables so people can enjoy these parks. Some water and power at the parks, whether or not it happens at the same time as the Dog Parks, but the little spigots that you turn, and they turn themselves off, so they can't be left on. And then considering Dog Parks, whether or not, I think they're a really good, important part of community health for our population as well as the dogs.
I think that brings up a really good point, too, in that we, I was speaking, and I've had this, a similar conversation a couple times with some of our residents that are 65 and older, who were bringing in new parks. And what is exactly, are they going to do with a park? But then when we talk about, well, but you could walk your dog, and you could sit at a bench, and you can do some other things, there's that piece that becomes more appealing. And I think for a lot of our residents, when we're talking about inclusivity, that's something that we do need to look at, is how are we drawing in those different activities for everyone of all ages? And, you know, I mean, I'm probably not going to go swing on a swing, but I love the traditional swing. But I saw a swing today in a catalog that's just a metal swing that you can sit in, almost like your front porch swing. And the idea of getting to sit in that with a friend or family member, I think would be appealing to almost anybody that's in our community. And so I think considering ideas like that, that are a little bit unique. Sweet Home is a little unique, but I think we can get a lot of bang for our buck by looking at certain things like that and really thinking about the needs of our specific residents. So I think that's a really good point. Thank you.
Yeah. Turn on your microphone, please. Thank you.
A couple questions. The park that's at the Fish Hatchery, that's not ours, right? But are we including it in a number of acreage for Sweet Home residents? That's totally separate from what we have going on, right?
That's Wiley Creek, and you guys don't have that included.
Oh, I thought it was a different name than Wiley Creek. So, okay. And then can you explain the wayfinding system plan and what that actually entails? Because I have a crazy dream, and I want to know if it could align with that signage plan.
Yeah. So wayfinding plans develop, you have an opportunity to develop like styles, so colors or kind of like a branding for your town, that signage would use those colors and even get into like what kind of fonts and things like that would be used. And then the wayfinding plans, some, a designer would provide a series of different types of signs. So there would be signs specifically for like really large directional signs if someone's driving or something that provides signage to a pedestrian. And then you would have the signage that would work for, or would be designed appropriately for use on street or inside a park. It could also include things like kiosks, educational signs. But what the wayfinding plan does is it designs all of them at the same time, so that even if you implement them slowly, you have a way to connect all of that signage together. And it's really great for both residents but also tourism.
Yeah, because for tourism, I had this crazy idea, like if you had those informational kiosks or those wayfinder signs, and people could maybe go on like scavenger-type hunt throughout all of your parks and maybe bring the ticket to the City Hall and get a $5 coin to use at A&amp;W or something like that, it could possibly generate more interest into seeing all the parks that we have in town. So that's something that I would love.
Just going to comment that that is not a crazy idea.
It's a good idea.
The last thing I wanted to know, is this just an idea? Or is this a plan that we're going to vote on? Or are we just at a work session?
So this is the Sweet Home Parks System Plan draft. So this is right now the work session where they've gotten it to, what, 80%? Maybe 90%, somewhere around there. So it's time to make sure that you all have included the city council goals, some of the other things you all want to make sure that you're seeing. And it's a time for us to kind of discuss that. They'll take notes and then come back at a later date for you all to vote on it. And then this is a 20-year plan, so it's a guiding document. So it, as we're moving forward with budgets and additional park plans and so forth, we do want to look at this as a document to guide us over the next 20 years. That doesn't mean that it's the only thing that we can do. If additional stuff comes up, if we get given a whole bunch more property, we can still make amendments, add it in, and do things like that. But it is trying to give us guidance for the next 20 years.
One more thing, if I might add. In our discussions with the consultants and with the Park and Tree Committee, we've talked about how we want this plan, the staff's perspective is that this plan should be aspirational. We recognize that there is some major costs associated with the things that are in here and that we would like to do. And we're not naive to the fact that these things cost money. But we would rather, when putting a plan together that is voted on by the council and is set in motion, we'd rather be aspirational and aspire to things greater than we actually can do. Because when, once you get those things into a plan that is officially adopted and been publicly vetted and have all these components that our plan has, it opens you up better to future grant applications. It opens you up more. It opens you up more for donations. It really gives you a document that you can show to the public and show to developers and show to funders. These are all the things that we want to do, and the public has commented on these things. And it gives you more weight for your applications, for your asking for donations, for seeking grants and so forth.
So if there's things that we're concerned about that are high priority, do we speak now or forever hold our peace?
You don't have to forever hold your peace, but definitely speak now. It would be good to talk about it.
And if you, but also not to put you on the spot. If there are things that you think of in the next few days, in the next week, you don't need to keep your mouth shut. I mean, the minute something comes into your head about this, even if it's after this meeting, email me about it or Kelsey or let us know because there's still time to get it in. And even after this is adopted, it can be amended.
Because it's a twenty-year document, so. It should, if we're doing our jobs correctly, it should change a little bit. Because, for example, when we're looking at the demographics and the population and the population growth, right now, it's based on the 2020 census. We have seen a steep decline in the past four years. And so if we continue that trend, we're actually going to be needing to look at a larger population. So, but we don't know that yet.
So I'll just state my concern about the high priority on the First Avenue for the Clover Park, so.
What page was that?
You're talking about the parking. And now it's closing the north side of First Avenue.
Yeah, we're happy to take a look at that. Councilor, do you mind expanding on what aspect are you concerned about, traffic or safety?
We have just had a lot of discussions about that and what it would mean to people that utilize that road. And so we had talked prior about some different ideas temporarily. So when I read that there is a high priority to close First Avenue as a recommendation, I want to pause a little bit on that one.
And I would say that that definitely is an area that should be modified simply because there's so much still in flux. That description should say implement improvements to the First Street and Main Street intersection to provide more parking for Clover. Whether that includes a closure or some modification of the road remains to be seen. But the fact of the matter is, we need parking at Clover if there's going to be, if anybody's going to enjoy using it, because right now, it's pretty much only available for pedestrians.
I would love to prioritize trails, but.
Well, we just applied for a million-dollar grant for trails. So I agree with you. I think it is a high priority, just provided on the funding. And then also, I have to say, the Clover Park piece, I was not aware that that was getting included. And so I, again, this is a draft, but I don't think we want to include that in the final document, at least not as a high priority. It can be a discussion item for us to look at. But I think that's where we need to keep it right now.
Thank you.
Any other comments or ideas?
Questions?
Well, I appreciate you guys coming tonight and walking us through this work session. Also, for all of the work you've done in gathering citizen input, I know you got a lot at the Harvest Festival, but you also had other groups that you interviewed. So thank you for doing that and getting our communities' input on this and the work you've done. Thank you. Close this work session at six twenty-four.